Thank you. To reiterate what Councilwoman Kilpatrick said, this is just a draft ordinance that was sent out to accompany today's discussion. I'd like to thank the Land Use Department, particularly Rich Hall and David Holston, who we've been working with now for over 18 months or so. When I first learned about the state code requirement that counties and local governments be net zero energy capable for residential code by 2025 and for the commercial code by 2030. So we started working on it, thinking we had lots and lots of time before 2025 got here. But now we're almost halfway through 2023. But we have been working hard together with our consultants who are with us today, and I can't thank them enough for all of their help in looking all around the country at what other municipalities have been doing and what might work best here today. We've had three webinars together with the Land Use Department and Green Building United and other partners, trying to just get the conversation going and explore different options. I'd also like to emphasize that this is capable, zero net energy capable. So we're not mandating that houses be anything more than just more energy efficient and also capable of taking advantage of more energy types of energy supply that are most efficient. So obviously, we'll get into more details there. But it's really, it's sort of like the EV ordinance that we passed that was for EV-capable capacity in our code. So again, this is just for informational purposes and discussion purposes today. And I'd like to welcome Michael Rossi from the Northeast Energy Partnership, as well as Cornelia Wu, and also Darren Port, formerly of NEAP, but now with the Pacific Northwest National Laboratory. And I will turn things over to you all. Thanks so much for being here today.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Durham. I'm Cornelia Wu, Senior Manager of Codes and Standards at NEAP, Northeast Energy Efficiency Partnerships. And I'm here with Michael Rossi, Senior Associate of Codes and Standards at NEAP, and Darren Port, Senior R&amp;D Engineer at PNNL Pacific Northwest National Laboratories. So NEAP is one of six RIOs, Regional Energy Efficiency Organizations throughout the U.S. NEAP itself covers 13 states from Maine down to DC. And we support state and local efficiency policies and programs. We are funded in part by the U.S. Department of Energy. And as I mentioned, I'm joined today by Michael and Darren. I'm going to give some background. Michael will continue with the stretch code proposal, and Darren will be available for questions as we get into that portion. So Delaware's Climate Action Plan sets an emission reduction target to 26% to 28% by 2025 and 40% by 2030. And 2005 is set at the baseline for the improvements. And just quickly, so that we're all on the same page, when we talk about zero net energy capable, a zero net energy home or building is defined as a residence or commercial building using lighting, appliances, insulation, onsite renewable energy. It results in zero net energy consumption. So a zero net energy home must be energy efficient enough that if the home or building owner chooses to add onsite generation, net zero energy could be achieved. So that means that the home is built in such a way that, for instance, there is sufficient insulation, there is a mechanical system, such as a heat pump system, that is calibrated correctly to that amount of insulation and the number of occupants to the home, such that if the owner moves to onsite generation, it is in fact possible, as a result of all of these building components, that they could be net zero. And as of 2025, the proposal is that all new residential building construction in the state of Delaware will be zero net energy capable per the climate law. And December 31, 2030, all new commercial building construction must also be zero net energy capable. So looking at electric vehicles and also solar, again, for residential, we're looking at capability for electric vehicles. As an upgrade, the builder can offer a ready option, which is basically, you can think of that as a pre-wiring option. For commercial requirements for residential group two, 50% of the parking spaces would need to be EV-capable. And for solar or photovoltaic, there aren't requirements for residential. But for commercial, again, there would be a solar-ready zone area that the designers would put onto the construction documents. And there would be interconnection pathway, panel service, and roof load, so that, again, if the building owner wanted to put in solar, we wouldn't be looking at putting in new infrastructure, which would significantly add to the costs. And I'll turn it over to Michael Rossi for the stretch code proposal.
Thanks so much, Cornelia. So there's a few components of what we put in the stretch code based on industry best practices and things like that. So the three big areas we want to highlight are readiness provisions, alternative compliance pathways, and zero energy requirements. Cornelia, you want to go to the next slide, please? Great. So readiness is basically to accommodate the future installation of electric equipment. And the idea is so it reduces costs down the line of retrofits if the building is prewired to support future installation of equipment. Our proposal has readiness provisions in there for solar voltac systems, electric vehicle charging, cooking equipment, clothes drying equipment, and water heating equipment. Next slide, please. We also added alternative compliance pathways, which are alternative standards that can be met to achieve code compliance. These are typically used to ease the burden of code officials by encouraging a third-party verification. And also in there, the Inflation Reduction Act has incentives tied to meeting or exceeding some of these specific standards as part of the 45L tax credit. And then we also have some zero energy requirements, which is for commercial buildings, the building must produce more energy than it consumes through renewable energy generation. And for residential buildings, this home must achieve a certain energy reading index or ERI, which is 47, before factoring in onsite power production, after which case the energy rating index must be a zero or better. And also with this, so the zero energy requirements of this code are in line with the Inflation Reduction Act's $670 million, which is funding available for jurisdictions that adopt a zero energy code. Next slide. So with that being said, I'm going to dive into some of the specific provisions of the proposal. So our residential proposal is to adopt the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code, and with that include the Appendix RB, which is for a solar-ready zone, as well as Appendix RC, which is a zero-energy residential building provisions. We're also going to adopt electrification-ready provisions in Section R 404.4 of the code. And we also maintain the EV readiness, our electric vehicle readiness language. That was included in Ordinance 21116 in Section R 404.5. And this language is originally taken from the Newcastle County Code in Section R 404.2, which was in the amended 2018 International Energy Conservation Code. In addition to that, our residential proposal has added alternative compliance pathways through Passive House via both FIAS or Passive House Institute, which is an international standard, as well as another alternative compliance pathway of the Department of Energy's Zero Energy Ready Homes Program. So we added two new sections to account for those. The language for these sections is not just taken from thin air. The electric readiness language is taken from the first draft of the 2024 International Energy Conservation Code. That's still undergoing public review. Section R 404.5, as I mentioned, is taken from the Newcastle County Ordinance 21116. Section R 409 is taken from Section R 405 of the Massachusetts Residential Stretch Code. And Section R 410 was written by Darren with NEAP. So this is sort of where these sections are coming from. So they are generally through nationally vetted language or vetted by other states. So now we'll dive a little bit into the commercial stretch code proposal here. So for the commercial provisions, we have adopt the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code with Appendix CB, which is, again, guidance for solar-ready zone, and Appendix CC, which is zero-energy commercial building provisions, and also adopting electrification-ready provisions in Section C 405.14. We also, as mentioned, maintain the EV-ready language from Ordinance 21116 in Section C 405.13, which was originally Section C 405.10 in the 2018 IECC. And we also added alternative compliance pathways of Passive House for commercial buildings as well, but not for the zero energy homes, because that only applies for residential buildings. And for the commercial proposal, the language is taken in the different sections. So C 405.14 is taken from the Massachusetts Opt-In Specialized Code in Section CC 106.1 through CC 106.4. Section C 405.13 is taken from the Newcastle County Ordinance 21116. And Section C 409 is taken from Section C 407.3 of the Massachusetts Commercial Stretch Code. And for anyone that has any questions on this, I'm happy to send along the links to the language in those other codes. So our thoughts of what we anticipate being next up is the ordinance getting introduced officially at the county council meeting. It comes before the Land Use Committee with a public comment. Newcastle County votes and adopts the ordinance or the stretch code. Then we would help publish some resources for implementing the stretch code, and then helping provide some training opportunities for builders, officials, design professionals, graders, and anyone who's really going to be involved in the code adoption process.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Ms. Durham, do you want to make comments before we go to questions from council?
I would like to make one more comment, and our presenters can add more to this if they'd like. But I don't know if anyone is here from DENREC, from the State Energy Office, but if so, they might be able to answer questions as well. But I did want to just mention that, as I said before, we are following a state code requirement to have the residential in place by 2025. And the state is currently also on the 2018 IECC. But DENREC is moving forward with its process, its own process of adopting the 2021 code. And from our conversations with them in multiple meetings, and we've sort of been moving forward together in tandem over these past few months. So they're in the process of adopting the 2021 IECC code for the state and expect to have that in place by early 2024. So we are sort of working in tandem with them. And then that, you know, once that happens, it's definitely a requirement for us to keep up with that state code as well. So there's sort of two things in play, but we're moving together here with the state.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Mr. Carter?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. I agree, we need to be seriously thinking about this. The one thing I do expect we will hear about is added cost for development. And I just don't know if you guys have examples from some of the other areas you're drawing information of what the added costs are and then what the benefits are down the road in savings as we go into this. I'm sure we'll need to be able to address that issue, and I just don't know if you have any background on that.
Do any of the presenters want to comment on that? And if so, please state your name before you comment.
Yes, hi, Darren Port, PNNL. So yeah, there hasn't been a cost analysis on this particular proposal. We would estimate, however, there will be certainly some initial first costs, however, over the lifecycle of the home, that there would be a payback that would, you know, be satisfactory to the occupants or the building user because of the increased efficiency, the health benefits, and the avoided costs of having to retrofit to meet the state requirements later on down the road, that this would be cost-effective to implement at the time of construction. There are national studies. AC triple E, American Council for Energy Efficient Economy, has published a number of papers stating that the cost-effectiveness of putting these readiness provisions in a time of construction avoids costs later on in retrofit. Well, I'll leave it at that at the moment.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council members? Mr. Tool and then Mr. Cartier.
Thank you. You talked about stretch provisions. Is that meaning we're going above and beyond the stated code? Or I'm new, so if you can explain that to me a little bit more.
Yeah, I can jump back in and Michael or Cornelia.
Just state your name each time, thank you.
Oh, sure, no problem. Darren Port, PNNL. So yes, stretch code typically is above and beyond the state base code. So some folks call it a stretch code, others a step code. But yes, it goes beyond what the state minimums are, hence the stretch. And currently, within the NEAP region, the 13 states that compose the NEAP region from DC to Maine and West Virginia, there are seven states that have stretch codes. And then there are other states nationally as well that have stretch codes. Massachusetts, again, in the NEAP region, was the first in the country about 10 or so years ago, maybe even more at this point. Maryland, DC, Vermont, Maine, Rhode Island, all utilize stretch codes, as well as the state of Washington, California, and numerous local jurisdictions throughout the NEAP region and across the country.
Thank you. Mr. Cartier?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I know that on county council, we have several of us who have some experience in the construction industry. In Newcastle County, I'm familiar with our building code. We adopt from the international codes. So I think what we're seeing in Delaware is much more activity on the state level regarding energy efficiency. So what we're trying to do with this, I'm just trying to frame this whole kind of discussion and get the basis for the draft ordinance. So we are now reacting to, energy efficiency standards have not been implemented in the state code with the provisions of this, you know, coming draft stretch code to implement the standards that are in the state code, essentially. Is that what your understanding is in our context here in Delaware?
That's my understanding. Ms. Durham, did you or one of the presenters want to comment on that?
Sure, if I understand, John, your question correctly, and they can chime in if I'm wrong. As I said, we're moving sort of in tandem with DENREC. And although it may appear that we're sort of out in front right now, the effective date of what's put in the draft ordinance, the effective date is not until next July 1st. So we'd be, you know, within six months of the state requirement for implementing this for residential by January 1st, 2025. So I don't think we're, you know, we're not really, you know, ahead of what the state is doing, because they are also in the process of approving the 2021 IECC code and will be in alignment over the next 12, 18 months.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I think when I look at stretch code, I go back to something a little different I was involved with, with the 1990 Reauthorization Clean Water Act or Clean Air Act, where we put in provisions that, quite frankly, at that time, we didn't know the technology existed to meet them. But of course, the technology, we surpassed them by a long shot, and it did improve. In this case, what I think we're seeing is the better technology, the car technology and ramping up is happening so fast that you're just trying to be prepared for what is coming. And it's going to be here. I've been watching this pretty closely. And if we don't think about stepping out in front a little bit, this is not like the Clean Air Act, where we literally didn't have the technology yet. For a lot of this stuff, we have the technology, we don't quite have the manufacturing buildup yet to that speed. But we're going to be called flat-footed, is what's going to happen. It's going to happen pretty quickly. I agree with it. I know I'm in the process now of looking at converting over a transfer box in my house that I used for a generator, because I think my wife's getting ready to buy an EV, and I don't have conduit in. So I may be converting that cabling over. So it would have been nice to have it in at that time, but that was 20 years ago. I've been running my house on photovoltaics for over 20 years now. So I think in this case, while stretch code can be seen as overstepping, I think in this case, it's trying to get out in front of what is inevitably going to be here and going to be here really soon and not get caught flat-footed down the road.
Do any of the presenters want to comment on that?
I guess I'll, Darren Port at PNNL. Yeah, I would agree with Councilman's statement. I'd say technologically, everything that's included within the technical provisions of this proposed stretch code and ordinance is currently, you know, off the shelf. We're not looking at anything that isn't currently available. Manufacturing capacity or market demand, you know, is a separate issue. But again, everything is readily available and off the shelf. I think there are entire states as well as jurisdictions throughout the country that are moving in that direction. They see, as the councilman said, kind of the direction that things are headed nationally with decarbonization and electrification of the built environment. And Newcastle County will, you know, emerge as a leading by example municipality with the adoption of this ordinance. So I think it's, you know, national as well as state policy is headed this direction, and you're just in line, if not, you know, again, just leading by consideration of the stretch code.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council members?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Let me do Mr. Street and then Mr. Bell. Is that okay? Go ahead, Mr. Street.
Repeatedly, before the presentation, after the presentation, the word "we" has been repeatedly used. Who is "we"?
Mr.?
All these "we's." Who's "we"?
Ms. Durham, do you want to respond to that? If not, we can get back to him. It's up to you.
Well, if you can't respond to "who's the we's," then what part of the "we's" authorized, mandated the so-called proposed stretch?
Mr. Street, at this point, it is a draft ordinance that will come before council at some point.
I just want to know who the "we's" that did authorize, suggest, or trying to mandate this stretch?
Ms. Durham?
No, no one is mandating the stretch, Jay. We've just been working on how to meet the state mandate that is in state code for residential zero-net energy capable by 2025 and commercial by 2030. And we've been having multiple meetings and conversations about how best to do that.
Who is "we"?
Myself, the consultants, folks from DENREC, folks from the Land Use Department, folks from Green Building United. All of you have been invited to all of the webinars. Some of those, I think, are still available, if you'd like to see them, on Green Building United's website. So those have all been open to the public. We've had conversations with the Home Builders Group, with the Land Use Department. So there's been quite a few people involved in many conversations to date.
All right, I'll come back to "we," I'll come back to "we" and "stretch" at a later date. What's, as you and the experts envision it, what is going to be the impact on affordable housing?
That's a discussion that we're going to have to have. They said in the presentation, I believe, that they didn't have any actual numbers, but some of the home builders are putting numbers on these. But as we're not discussing the draft ordinance, we're really just discussing the presentation that we were asked to host. I don't want to be one that talks about something that I'm not 100% sure of.
If I could just add, Jay, we felt like we were at the point where we were ready to have this conversation with county council, because, and it seemed to me to make more sense to have this more informal conversation before introducing the legislation than introducing it and then having conversation and having to either do a substitute bill or, you know, coming back with a new bill or whatever. So I wanted to have this conversation, have this presentation today, put the draft out there, get comments from everyone. And I know there are lots of people waiting for comments and public comment on the Zoom. That's what we want. We want the feedback so that we can continue refining this draft bill before it comes to county council. So that was the goal today.
Well, I'll close with this, Madam Chair. It just seems to me like there's all this emphasis and excitement on the part of a few people for making things energy efficient. And the people impacted, who already can't afford houses, aren't even being considered. So I have major concerns, and I'm sure before this is over, I'm going to have some additional concerns about the "we" and the "stretch."
Thank you, Mr. Street. Mr. Bell?
And Council President also.
Oh, all right. Mr. Bell is passing, so Council President.
Yes, I believe Mr. Street has a good point. And I'd like to have a list of the people that have been involved, and so that with contact information, so that I can contact them and get their points of view, because, as you know, we represent the people in this county. So I want to make sure that I have their input as well, because I'm not hearing what their comments are, where they are on this. And I want to make sure that I have reached out to them as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Mr. Sheldon?
I just want to go back where Mr. Street was talking about affordable housing. Is DENREC going to be able to, or any person, agency, to give grants to maybe something to keep the affordable housing intact at some point? I heard about data. You're right, if you don't have to pay electric, years down the road, it'll pay for itself. As my daughter told me last week, Daddy, I'm hungry now. When I was trying to get her to 401K max out, she said, Daddy, I can't afford it, I got to eat. This is what's going to happen, yes, down the road 30 years from now, you might save a lot. But for somebody that's in her 70s, what are they going to save before they die? And what do people in their 30s, where can he go to try to help get money? I mean, I'd really like to hear what DENREC, if there are one, has called to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. And the one thing that I will say about housing prices, at this point, I had the conversations this afternoon with another councilperson, and the median price housing here right now is about $470,000, which is very And the median price housing here right now is about $470,000, which is very, very high for a median priced house. Every thousand dollars that we add on to the base price of that house, we put 392, 391 people beyond mortgage approval. So that in this county, we've placed a lot of emphasis on affordable housing. Affordable housing in what even we consider in this county, in my mind, is above what a college student coming out of, out of school, wanting to stay here and getting a job. We're beyond that at this point. So I think that this is something that obviously when the bill comes, when the ordinance comes before us, is going to be a major discussion. So I see Ms. Durham and Mr. Carter's hands up.
I just wanted to let you know that the two of the presenters have their hands up and Maya Crasker from Denrec is also willing to speak.
Okay. And, okay, Mr. Carter.
Yeah, I think there are some funds in the current federal fund that could help with affordable housing and having these provisions. Whether or not that lasts, we don't know. But we should explore whether or not we have to do some scaling similar to, I think we're going to have to explore that with things like impact fees. And if you can build it 80% of AMI or 70% of AMI, maybe we cut some of these out. The concern I have in doing that is that I feel regardless of your income, you should be eligible to enjoy renewable energy. I can tell you that I've had solar for 20 years and it's pretty amazing to produce 73% of your electric use with solar and have not had to really pay much of a bill other than a delivery fee for electric for a long, long time. So we got to find that balance. We got to really be creative with the grants to get it. I mean, we struggled with this when I was trying to do some housing work in Southbridge and I got frustrated with the large solar array that went where the old Southbridge extension was. But at least it did go back to supplement some of the affordable electric for, for those communities here. I think community solar is a better answer for them. But it is something we need to talk about. I think there are some options, but it's a very good point. It's a very valid point. And it's one that I think across the nation, it's not, we're not the only one with affordable housing issue. This is a national crisis and we just need to figure out how we integrate this with it and how we make that work and make it work so that it's fair to everyone without kind of excluding someone from being able to have these type of options for renewable energy and cheap energy long term, just because they don't have a lot of money now. We got to find a better way to do it.
Thank you. And Mr. Port, your hand is up, correct?
It is. Actually, I'll defer to Cornelia and then you could come back to me, please.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wu.
Yes, Cornelia Wu Ni. I had a comment about funding. As Michael mentioned briefly in the presentation, the Inflation Reduction Act does have 670 million in funding allocated towards jurisdictions that adopt the zero energy code. Now, this is not something we have a great deal of information on because the notice of intent was only just published in a few months ago and the funding opportunity announcement will probably come out this fall. But that, that amount has been appropriated specific to zero energy codes. And the 330 million, the balance of the 1 billion is specifically for states that adopt the base code, the 2021. So I know that, you know, Denrec and Newcastle County are moving in parallel. So, so those two amounts would be available. I think it is, to repeat, that this is a countrywide issue. And in respect to that 1 billion dollars, the federal government has been, you know, looking closely at what effects asking for a latest stretch code or zero energy code would have on communities. And, and then just one more note about energy burden. It is, of course, very important that people be able to afford homes. It is equally important that people be able to stay in the homes that they have. Energy burden is, again, a nationwide problem and people in disadvantaged communities and LMI communities are often seeing 30% of their incomes dedicated towards utilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Port.
Yeah, Darren Port, PNNL. So just a few comments from the increase, the increased efficiency of the construction methodologies we're talking about. The savings are essentially immediate. We're not talking having to wait 10 years or 30 years down the road to, to recoup costs, but they will be seen, you know, within the first month of occupancy in these buildings. As Cornelia said, there are some federal tax credits and federal programs that are in development that are, have been appropriated and, and rules and applications are forthcoming. One of the alternative compliance pathways that's being proposed in the ordinance is currently available for a $5,000 tax credit. So we anticipate that would probably meet the, the first cost of some of the provisions that we're, we're talking about. So it could end up being cost neutral to implement this to, to start with. And then the, with the efficiency gains, occupants, owners, tenants, renters, we'll see immediate savings. Additionally, some of the alternative compliance pathways that propose in this ordinance are already eligible under Delaware's affordability regulations and the low income housing tax credits. So there's already precedent within the state for some of the methodologies of construction that we're, we're talking about. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no more.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll still, I'll put my hand back up.
Okay, thank you. I can't see that.
That's, that's not your fault. As we speak, we have folks sitting around bragging about our initiatives and we included in back of the library at Claymont was affordable housing with the new house. One of those so-called affordable houses is on the market. Nobody who makes more than $67,000 can buy it. And nobody who makes thus far $67,000 or less can afford it. So the house has been sitting there for six months. Madam Chair, you just said medium, median income for houses $400,000. And the "we's" and the "stretches" are only going to make it worse. And what that basically means is people that look like me not going to be included. I'll leave it at that for today.
Thank you. If there's no more council questions, I'm going to go to public comment. Tara, do we have a public comment?
Uh, yes. First up is Maya Crasker. Maya, just unmute at your microphone. Please state your name for the record and make your comments.
Yeah, hi. I'm Maya Crasker from Denrec, which is also the State Energy Office. I guess I figured I'd just offer a few details since it was posed as a question towards Denrec regarding, you know, funding specifically, I believe, around solar energy and the, and the like. And I would just like to offer some information particularly regarding what Denrec has to offer and also Energize Delaware. So Denrec offers grants that are available for like, you know, qualifying renewable energy systems. And that's for any residential building. There's also additional funding that is available for, basically that would offer reduced cost or free cost of installation for solar, solar panels onto houses. And that's for low and moderate income communities. And again, that is determined based on your, your financial, I guess, your, your paychecks and such. On top of that, the Energize Delaware program, which is run through the Delaware Sustainable Energy Utility, offers, I believe, solar loans. So they offer like low interest loans for people who are interested in installing, in installing these renewable energy systems. So I'll just leave that there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public commenter.
Uh, next up is Dustin Thompson. Dustin, I've just unmuted your microphone. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. My name is Dustin Thompson. I'm the chapter director for the Sierra Club Delaware chapter. Although I don't think we can count ourselves amongst the "we", I, I have, you know, our organization is certainly very interested in, in this policy in energy efficiency, renewable energy and things of the like. I am a resident of Newcastle County. I live outside the Wilmington city limits between Wilmington and Elsmere and the county portion in Colonial Heights. Just wanted to make a couple of comments on, on this policy and why we see it as a, as a positive thing. One, I just want to point out that while this could be considered a stretch code under the terms of the guise of the IC, I E C C, and that it's not going to be in the, in the, it's going to be in the appendices, I believe, of the 2021 I E C C. This would not be considered a stretch code in the terms of state policy. All counties are going to have to come to some resolution on adopting a net zero energy capable, or sorry, zero net energy capable building code. So while Newcastle County, I believe, is probably the first to really start in earnest these conversations, which is often the case, God bless you all in Newcastle County Council, will certainly not be the only one that has to have these conversations as well. So in terms of affordable housing, just to pick up on what Maya laid down, Energize Delaware does offer, currently offer grants for zero net energy modular homes, loans as well. I believe they have a whole program around that. I, we are encouraging them to look at, you know, additional programming for these types of policies as well. There's already a lot of available funds for electrification and the like, which is a, a, a big driver of the net zero energy home conversations around electrification. Certainly it is far cheaper to have something like this where you're running conduit and cable for future electrification, even if the current prospective buyer does not want to have that installed out from the gate. Certainly having the ability built in is far cheaper than, than retrofitting, particularly when we're talking about, in these homes, we're talking about 100 year infrastructure. My house is well over 100 years and old. And so it is leaps and bounds more reasonable in terms of cost to build those modifications in for future owners, even if the current occupant, prospective buyer is less interested.
Thank you, Dustin. Everybody gets three minutes and your three minutes is up, but I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I did not have time to say, thanks.
Next public speaker.
Hi, next up is Daniel Marzick. Daniel, I just unmuted your microphone. Please state your name for the record and make your comments.
Yes, thank you. My name is Daniel Marzick. I'm the Communications and Policy Manager with Green Building United. I first want to open by saying thank you to Councilmember Dee Durham for bringing forward this ordinance. It shows true leadership. And the reason for that is because this ordinance really is getting ahead of the curve. As was mentioned before, that the incentives are there right now for local municipalities and jurisdictions to really take hold of the federal funding that is available to implement ordinances such as these. And they are critical. They are, these ordinances are a critical piece of our landscape if we are to ensure that our communities, all of our communities are resilient in the face of growing and increasing threats from climate change. It's also critical to the future health of many of our communities, many of which have been facing a, you know, a large burden of environmental injustice over many, many, many years. And that for them to remain in the homes that they're currently in and to be resilient in the face of ongoing changes and stay healthy, that these, you know, buildings are retrofitted and that new construction is prepared with the net zero requirements of the future. So with that said, there's much more to be said, but I want to go ahead and make sure that there's time for others. So thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker.
Uh, next up is Bahre Van Bokold. I've just unmuted your microphone. Please state your name for the record and make your comments.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bahre Van Bokold. I am a member of Delaware Community of Green Building United. We are a group of volunteers that for the last 12 years have been working in our state to ensure resilient, healthy and high performing building for all. I want to note that I'm also a resident of Newcastle County. I want to reiterate and agree with what Daniel said, but also want to add a couple of additional points. I want to actually commend both Jay and Councilwoman Nigel and Councilman Street for their comments. If we want to have an equitable stretch code, we need their input. They need to go to their people and they bring this, their feedback. However, I want to also say kudo to Newcastle County to plan for this ordinance and Councilwoman's, Dee Durham's leadership. Because if we don't have a stretch code and start thinking about it and start talking about what resources we need to provide to our affordable housing providers, then they will left behind. When these become mandates, when people who can afford it are going to have net zero and all electric homes and they will have their PBs, those people are frontline companies, are going to be left behind. The stretch code, this thinking here, talking about it, having the conversation of figuring out how we are going to have it for all as a stretch code and figure out how we are going to hold hands of our provider, affordable housing providers so they can build to these higher performance standards that are, as Daniel said, are more resilient, meaning that if the electricity is cut off, they can stay in their home without actually feeling too cold or too hot, that their electricity that they will pay, their utility bills are lowers. We need to actually think that these need to happen and how can we actually provide the resources for the more, the least resourceful to meet this need. I want to say, yes, this conversation will enable resources for us to actually push it out as a state mandate so we can make sure that the least resourceless of, of the Newcastle County residents are also living in healthy homes. That's number one. Number two, I want to add that currently actually SEU or Energize Delaware.
You have 30 seconds left.
Sure. Has, has actually incentivized resources and technical assistance for affordable housing, but not everybody knows about it. So Councilwoman Street, you are right, but we need to get this message out and let people know that there are resources and let's connect them to those resources. So they will be, those people also can afford and live in better housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next public speaker.
Uh, next up is BJ Carey. BJ, I've just unmuted your microphone. Please state your name for the record and make your comments.
My name is BJ Carey. I'm a builder here in Newcastle County. I just want to clear up a few points that have been discussed on this. The first one is it's not the county's responsibilities to make sure that we're zero energy ready. The way the state law was written is actually the, the state's responsibility and the county is really not allowed to be materially different from the state's code. So all of the, it's not the county's problem to solve for net zero energy. It's the state's and the state is currently, you know, taking steps to, to work on that. The second thing I want to just bring up is the, the federal money that's in the Inflation Reduction Act is not available to purchasers. It's available to local and state governments that have the ability to adopt codes. So in this case, it would be the state of Delaware, potentially Newcastle County, but I don't know if Newcastle County is technically allowed to adopt a code that's different from what the state adopts. So I don't know if the county would be eligible. So that billion dollars that, that they're throwing around that's available, it's not for buyers. It's only for the governments themselves. There are, there's tons of money for, for solar upgrades, but those are actually outside the scope of this presentation. Solar wasn't, wasn't part of this presentation at all. So that's. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next. Comment, public commenter.
Councilwoman, there is no further public comment.
Very good. Thank you so much. I see Mr. Sheldon's hand up. Mr. Sheldon?
Yeah, I mean, I guess as Jay says, you opened the door. I'm going to keep it very civil, but some of this is BS. I've applied for Denrec and I'm trying to, you know, keep it cool here. When I applied for Denrec, it was the poorest ZIP code in the state of Delaware to go, I, I agree with going net zero. I'm applying for it for the United Way Building so I can get all nonprofits that are small to be able to come in, come rent free on our first floor, our lobby. To do that, I applied for grants for Denrec who told me, oh, we're sorry, there's no money. Then he said, and, and, well, I need a new roof, which is going to be a million dollars. They said, well, maybe we can give you 100,000. Okay? So let's get off of this subject that we're going to help poor people and people have, it will be minority, let's face it, a 19801 ZIP code, that I'm not getting a dime when I need around $6 million to put solar and get net zero. So everybody's there at Sierra Club and everybody's going to go up and dance and this is so great. If you can't make it affordable for anybody to help people who workforce development, this is actually going to create jobs. I said this to Denrec. Eh, you know? So I want to see where the funding comes to and where United Way of Building, the Linden Building, which guys has four other nonprofits, Short Order, SODAT, and we're trying to do the first floor so we can rent out flex space for $0 to $50 a month for a desk or something to help us so we can get small nonprofits so then they can go and help the community, which does as good a job as any government around. And, you know, I don't want to steal the thunder or whatever, but, you know, everybody's saying how great it is, but if you can't afford it, why? Why are you going to hurt the small guy? I would love to hear a comment where my money is when I asked and he said, well, we'll give you 100,000 out of a million. You got to get the other 900,000. Really? And you're going to tell me how great this is?
Thank you. Ms. Durham? Thank you. Just one more comment in response to the last commenter, BJ, to correct the record. It's, it is the county's responsibility and I'll read from you the state code section that says, "A net zero energy capable home must be energy efficient enough that if the home or building owner chooses to add onsite generation, net zero energy consumption could be achieved. As of December 31, 2025, all new residential building construction in the state of Delaware shall be zero net energy capable. As of December 31, 2030, all new commercial building construction must also be zero net energy capable." The county is responsible for the building codes, not the state. The state adopts the code that the local governments in Delaware have to abide by in their zoning and building codes. So it is the county's responsibility. And to your second point about the Inflation Reduction Act money, yes, that money does go to the government, but based on the comments we've heard today, I'm assuming that we can look into how the government, in this case Newcastle County, might actually use that funding that it earns by meeting this, this requirement of zero net energy capable codes to possibly provide funding for affordable housing to meet the code and, and other ways. So we will begin looking into that. Our panelists might already have some information and thoughts on that, but we'll save that for another day and circle back to everyone.